I want to make a I want to make a I want to make a or some kind of even if it's just email asking people I sent you guys an email
I might have gone to Leon's mine is at gmail I might have gone to her
I do because I I sent it to an address that I was supposed to use and it had like AMP or something He had a that's what we went up to his house today and John was a younger son he had taken his medication Friday and he hadn't taken it Saturday and the kids were trying to call him they were trying to call him and they couldn't get him so they have Anita go check and he's out there
I'm good, I saw your trailer
Well, I forgot I kept thinking about that conversation I don't know, I'm more on Saturday good grief a half an hour she stood there and asked questions I just can't it's so curious those are my questions to ask I'm sorry, I'm sorry I spent three days with my sister I talked
Good evening, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It's Monday, June 12th, 2023 at 7pm. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before I start today, I've heard some comments recently from people who are trying to watch our meetings online afterwards that they're having difficulty hearing, so I would ask the ministers and also ask anyone who comes to the podium, I've also asked to have the microphone extended after this evening, but if you do come up to speak, please try and speak loudly so that you can get recorded and people can hear you after the fact. Thank you. I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda and add a Catherine Park Playground discussion under item 10, unfinished business. Do you need some support? I support it, thank you.
Addison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Thank you. Do I need to make a motion to approve the amended agenda?
And you have your roll call.
Is there support? Oh, you need to do roll call first.
We do roll call first.
Let's do roll call first.
Addison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Here.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Present.
Do you have a form?
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve the amended consent calendar, pardon, amended agenda rather.
I'll support. Roll call please.
Weeden?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Addison?
Yes.
Here.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to public comments, on agenda items only. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium and state your name to the minutes. Okay, seeing none, let's move down to the consent agenda. Someone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Addison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to scheduled matters for the floor. Tonight we have Meg Palette Perez from the Buchanan District Library here to update us on the library building campaign.
Hello. I haven't been picked up on this plan, I can't tell. Yes, okay, great. Thank you guys for letting me come and speak. I've been kind of making the rounds to all municipalities in our district and also other area groups and businesses, just trying to give an update on what's been happening at the library, especially in the last four years that I've been there, and then recently what our plans are for the future, just so that I can inform everybody about what's happening and also ask for your support, especially with our upcoming building campaign or ongoing, I should say. So, I'm sure many of you know this already, but I am Meg Palette Perez. I've been the library director since 2019. I did grow up here in Buchanan. I graduated from Buchanan High School. I really enjoy being the library director. It's the best job in the world and I'm very proud of all the things that we've accomplished since I've been there. We have a wonderful staff. I hope, I know many of you are patrons and are in the library often. If you're not, you should be. So, you know, our library is a district library. We do, are supported by two millages of our own, run by a board trustees. Again, we have a wonderful board. Some, we've had members who are on our board for 30 years and have really just helped our library to grow exponentially in the time that we've been a district library. So, our next, yeah, we're mainly funded through two 10-year operating millages. The next one is due for renewal next year. We don't have any plans to ask for an increase at this time. We've just been asking people to renew our millages for the last, I guess, about 15 years. So, some of the recent highlights since 2019, we did eliminate late fines in the summer of 2019. A lot of people have asked, "Oh no, how do you get books back now?" Trust us, we still get all our books back. Basically, all the people who always behaved still behave and all the people who never behaved still don't behave. But this helps even the playing field. It gets people in the door who maybe, you know, that $5 fine was a barrier and they would, just wouldn't come back. So, we didn't want that situation. It hasn't had any impact on our budget. It wasn't a large amount to begin with. And we do still ask the people if they lose materials, they are going to be responsible for those. So, it's not a free ride, but it's been successful. Another really popular thing that we've done in the last few years, we started a library of things. So, if you didn't already know this, you can check out a kayak at the library. You can check out a digital camera. You can check out Chromebooks. You can check out electric guitar. You can check out things to cook in your kitchen with. So, there's a lot of different items. It's added just a ton of value to the field to the community. You know, those things that maybe you don't need to own, but you'd like to have access to. We can all share those together now. We also launched a tutoring program in partnership with Buchanan Community Schools. This was in response to the pandemic, to a lot of the kids, especially, we kind of focused on second graders who at the time that we started this, they had been the kids who were in kindergarten when this all went down and they really needed that extra support. So, the library, through some grant funding and through other private donations, was able to offer tutoring. These are certified teachers who are coming in and tutoring students one-on-one. They're recommended to us by the school, so they come to the library after school and get some help to just boost them. And we saw across the board extremely successful because it was just very direct, you know, exactly what these kids needed. We're now in our third year for a program we're calling One Book One Buchanan, which is a community-wide reading program. So, this year we're very excited. We're going to have the author, Alex Kotlowitz, who wrote The Other Side of the River. It's the 25th anniversary of that book and he's going to actually join us for the discussion this year. So, this is a very simple program as well. You sign up, we give you a free book. All we ask is that you come discuss it with us. You don't have to agree with us about anything in the book. We just want everyone to come together and have a discussion. And then just this year, we started a seed library. So, that's another program that has been very popular right off the bat. We've already given away 500 packets of seeds at least and we are, you know, really excited to build this year after year. So, the idea is people take the seeds out from the library and then they harvest some at the end of the year and bring some back so that it's a sustainable resource. And we're providing education on both the front end, planting your garden and collecting the seeds afterwards. Because I can tell you, I'm one of the people that needs that education. I can barely grow, can't grow anything. But luckily, we have other people taking care of that. Okay, so that's kind of what's been going on, some of our goals for the future now. So, if you are a patron of our library and you're ever in, especially during certain times of the day, you will see that we are packed. We're trying to put on programs. We're trying to help people check out books. We're trying to have that seed library, that library of things. We are very busy. Our, you know, the number of people just using our library has gone up and up and the space that we are in has not grown in quite a while. So, we are seeing that we need to increase our space. And we are very lucky that we're in a building right downtown in such a great central location and we have almost the entire second floor as room to grow. So, you can see from, I know not everyone has this, but that picture that we're looking at of our second floor of our library, we have a lot of plans, obviously. One of our biggest goals is to create a large community room, kind of on the north end of the building. It would be overlooking Front Street. That would just provide a space for those library programs. You know, I teach a ukulele class to kids and I can tell you it's extremely disruptive when I have to do that in our small community room downstairs and try to shut the door and be as quiet as possible. We need that space upstairs. We can offer more educational programs on this way. We can offer more activities for teenagers. I know that's something that often comes up. People want stuff for teens to do in town, but we don't have a lot of space for that. So, you can see here that, you know, it's going to be a $500,000 project to create this large gathering space, put in a small kitchenette and update the bathrooms on the second floor of our building because we don't have working bathrooms up there right now. This would also be available for the community. So, it wouldn't just be for the library. This would be something that, just like currently our space, you can come in and you can, you know, use it if it's a nonprofit or private, use for free. If it's a business use, it's a very small cost. And so, it would be the same, same thing. So, that's our first priority and we are actually getting kind of close to our fundraising goal. We really do need some support from, you know, hopefully maybe some larger donations coming in from businesses or other. But we've had, just in this year, in our fiscal year, we've had $50,000 or so small donations from the community, which is huge, but we really need those larger donations coming in to help us get over the edge there. And then our second priority, we are looking at creating something that right now we're calling Hometown Pub. And I'm kind of glancing back there actually because she's been helpful and helping us to imagine this space. And as you know, there's the Business Incubator program that she's working on. We've talked a lot about having some kind of tandem programming going on. So, you know, we're looking at creating a computer lab and some small, like breakout rooms that would be really geared towards entrepreneurs, having things like the Don't Be Creative suite available for people, having, you know, audiovisual equipment, all kinds of things that you might need to support small businesses that are starting up. Plus also boardroom space, small meeting room space, so that if you don't have that, you know, if you don't have permanent office space, you would be able to come to the library and use that. This is something that you'll see a lot in larger libraries in bigger cities and we're really excited that, to, of the idea of bringing that kind of resource to Buchanan. I think that's something that attracts people to a town when they have a really strong library like this that offers these kind of resources. That's something that's going to keep people here, is going to attract people to our city. Okay, so, I'm sorry, I've said a lot. Just a couple more things. So, how can, if you're listening to me and you're like, "This is great, sounds wonderful, how could I get involved?" First of all, just come and use the library. We just really want everybody in our town, everybody in our district to be taking advantage of this. I mean, if you live here, you're supporting us already. This is your library, so come and use it. We really want, want to see you in the building. We have a lot of volunteers who help support us. You know, we are a small staff and so our volunteers really make it possible for us to do a lot of these extra things that we, that we are bringing to our community. We are actively seeking donations for the building project, but also just for other things like that tutoring program I mentioned or any sort of ongoing costs. You know, we are supported by those millages, but they kind of just get us to the, you know, to be overrun. If we want to do all these extra things, we really do need that extra support. And then last, we really need everybody to be an advocate for libraries right now. This is kind of a scary time for many libraries. You've probably heard about libraries that get shut down, you know, and people not really understanding how we are here for everybody in our community and that we really want to be a reflection of our community. So, I appreciate everyone going out there and just being a voice for us and, you know, speaking support for the library. So, that's, that's my spiel for tonight. If anybody has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
How did you do for your Christmas fundraiser?
We did pretty good. We made about $10,000.
So, now are you going to, are you going to keep it straight, you know, like my phone's 15 years old, so? Are you going to keep it for the phone or are you going to?
Oh, the auction? Probably, and I'll tell you, the main, the reason is that then a lot of people can participate who don't actually come to the event. Because some people just can't make it for whatever reason. Yeah, unfortunately, yeah, I'm not always the biggest fan of new advances in technology myself, but it, it did really help the library raise more money to do it that way.
Good, that's a good one.
I want to congratulate you on everything that you've accomplished so far. I think the library and the community are both really looking at you, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Meg.
Good job, Meg.
Okay, moving down to item B, the Southwest for Michigan Community Ambulance Services. Brian Scribner is here to discuss the city of Buchanan possibly pursuing a special assessment. You're back.
Back. Seems like just yesterday.
Well, I'm Brian Scribner. I'm the executive director for SMACAS Ambulance Service. Am I hitting the mic? Good. All right. Last year we were in here and we were talking about the funding and I was telling you that staffing shortages and funding problems were coming to our industry and they have. Our industry continues to have a funding shortage and the cost of the workforce has gone up. We've had to increase our wages 16% over the last year and they'll probably go up another 6% next year to remain competitive and everybody around us has followed suit with that. We're not just looking at wages though, we're, we're working hard on education. The state released a $9 million workforce grant this last December. That was a competitive grant with a maximum of $350,000 awarded to each applicant. We got the ambulance services around us, about six ambulance services around us. We came together and talked about this and we divided up into partnerships. SMACAS and Medic One applied for one grant and the other services applied for the other grant. We both were awarded a maximum amount, were very close to the maximum amount. So, we'll be putting 21 people through paramedic schools starting in July. We're very excited about that. We've got to keep our foot on the gas though. There's a second grant that I'm in the process of writing right now. It'll be enough to put 15 people through EMT school as well. So, we're working on solutions for this. We're hoping after three or four years, we'll be able to run much smoother with fewer staffing shortages and the like. So, we continue work on that, it's a little bit of good news. So, the budget that we brought in front of you, did you have any questions on that? Did you look at it or?
I want to know what your wages are.
Our wages, my wages?
Well, not necessarily your wages, but you said the wages went up 16%. That doesn't mean nothing. What is the hourly wage?
It depends on the classification. And I, our top of scale went to, which is the, the critical care paramedic, long-term, went to about the mid 70s annually. I can't do the hourly from memory.
So, you're talking about $30 an hour?
Well,
$40 a week, or you?
Right, they're stretched over 56-hour work week. So, it's a lower hourly, but yeah. It would be equivalent of somebody making 13 an hour.
What's the startage salary?
For paramedic? It's roughly in the mid 50s.
It's come up substantially over the last few years.
Yeah, yeah, it's had to.
You have to in order to fill in positions.
Yeah, I really do.
Well, I think, you know, I discussed it with Callan and Tim briefly and I, because we had to work on our budget before we got your numbers, we had the majority covered in our budget for next year. I think we're $7,000 or maybe somewhere in that range.
Because we put 75,000 and it's 82 by population.
I mean, just for discussion sake, my, my opinion would be to amend the budget at the seven grand and pay it out of the general fund. I think that our community's already paying enough in taxes without adding a special assessment. We haven't budgeted, that would be, that would be what I would propose.
I don't have a problem with that and every time I see Brian over the last nine years, I always ask, "What are you doing to raise your own funds?" And, I mean, grants are great, that's still taxpayer money. So, and I know mailings are expensive and, but, that's how the insurance companies do it. And going to the senior center, you know, you're not reaching quite enough population. And I really, because I mean, it's quite a deal really, if you put it out there. And I just don't see it posted out there to where I would think that you could raise substantial funds through that. Now, you've told me time and time again, no, but then I don't hear any other answers on how to keep from raising taxpayer money to do this.
Well, the, the biggest solution to, to all of this is to get ambulance services properly reimbursed for their services at the fee-for-service level. Being reimbursed for the work we do properly would solve all of this problem for all of us. We have been doing a lot of work at the state level. I'm on the Michigan Association of Ambulance Services Board of Directors and we are working with the state right now to increase funding for the ambulance services. And some of that will come with what they call Medicaid parity. So, right now Medicaid pays 35%, 35 cents on the dollar for everything we build up.
What does Medicare pay?
Medicare is in the 45 to 50 range. And so, they're, they are working on a parity where Medicaid will have to pay us what Medicare pays us. The, they actually passed this law last year. We were pretty excited about it, but then they didn't also include the funding in the budget, which is, we, we got surprised by that. We thought we'd won and then suddenly we weren't getting paid what we thought we were going to get. So, we're working on that again this year. There'll probably be more information out on how, how you can support us in that, which is grassroots support. And that will reduce what we need over the years if we can get, if we can get that funding up where it needs to be. So, yeah, that, that's my answer. As far as the membership goes, I love the membership and I am open to any way to promote it. We've, we've spent a fair amount of money promoting it in the past with very limited success. So, any ideas anybody has on how to do that, I would love to hear them. I'm sure somebody has better ideas than me. Hope they do, so.
Post it on Free Facebook, where people post it. And I want the, I want the contacts that you have because, you know, I'm a delegate now for the county. So, but I do talk to these people pretty regularly. And I'm not going to drop names, but I do talk to them pretty regularly. And the budget was a debacle. I mean, it was just a debacle. And that's firsthand information from one of our senators. So, I mean, we can't fight that. So, we're going to have to figure out how to do it here at home. I mean, saying that it's the state's fault isn't going to help pay for it. So, what can we do? I mean, what do we need to do other than ask the taxpayers to pay for, pay for things that people can't pay for themselves?
Yeah.
Brian, do you want to hit on, just because of how last year, everything between the municipalities that do have SMACAS, just so that you guys notice for the record, between me and Brian, we're talking earlier, Howard Township and the city of Niles is the only one that bought into the five-year special assessment. Us and Buchanan Township and Bertrand Township did a year and the Niles Township did two years at $5. And the rest of them are going to pay out of their general fund. So, they're saying, because now people wanted to go by population, since the municipalities decided to go that route, instead of doing a special assessment by property, we're kind of, we don't really know what the special assessment would be. And SMACAS is not giving us the notices, the resolutions. It would be on the city to do that as well, okay? Myself and Brian were talking earlier that somehow we need to gather the municipalities together Yeah, because technically they, the municipalities have that agreement, we have to abide by that agreement. So it would be very, I'm not really sure how it would look, we have to do more research. And Brian has been awesome about kind of talking with Drew and Tim over there, we've been going back and forth about, okay, how are we going to do this? But last year when everybody said no, and it kind of messed the whole thing up. Now we have to figure out where we're gonna go from here.
Right. I do believe that the owner municipalities coming together to come up with a more permanent solution is a very, very good idea.
So when are you gonna need a special assessment again? Are we gonna have to do this annually?
Well, right now this would be, yes, this would be for this year.
So. Yes.
As soon as we approve this, we we really need to start planning with the other municipalities.
It takes, it'd take what, three months? For us to be able to create the district, go through all the notices, you have two resolutions to pass, and then the third. So there's three notices, creating the district, it's a lot of time and energy that we need to do right now so that we can, by the time tax bills come, be able to put that in a special assessment on the case.
You're saying if we don't just pay it out of the general fund this year?
Right.
Right.
Yeah, we need, we need to go out of the general fund and then move forward with the assessment, right?
Either way, it's up to you.
Or keep paying annually out of our general fund, that's what they're saying. I think, I mean, I think it's in everyone's best interest if we can all team up and figure out a long-term solution to this problem. Yeah, and I don't hate to call you a problem, but funding you is a problem.
Yeah. Well, you had your work cut out for you, I guess you can find your funding that way, cause I really don't want to lay this on our administration, cause they're overloaded.
It doesn't matter, we have an agreement, it is on us.
So even if we did, if we did a special assessment this year, we would have to do all of the mailings. Last year they offered to do it, this year we would have to do it.
They offered to pay us back, we invoice them for the time spent, all the postage. Brian would give me, send me the resolutions, he would send me the notices, and then we would have to, we worked with the county to be able to print it off at a cheaper price, cause there's no way we could have made that in-house. You're talking about four thousand mailers for three times. So we work with them as well as city staff here trying to get that done as quick as possible, because you only have that two-week span. If you guys decide not to pass the resolution, and we weren't gonna have those printed, so it was constant. So we need to know ahead of time so that we can plan around that, but.
Brian, help a simple mayor get something through his head.
Yeah, I got you.
Somebody's asking for money and we have to figure out how to give it to them?
Well, because it's going by population now, am I right, Brian? It's not by, because of everybody that opted out of this, it's going by population, ever the municipality.
There's a question on why, sorry, remember, that was a, that was a very important point of that discussion, was that we were doing it by parcel. How did it get switched to population?
So, uh, the the articles in incorporation say that it's divided by population. The municipalities many years ago, way before me, uh, came together and said, hey, there is no tax structure that allows us to assess something by population. The closest thing is the the per parcel, uh, assessment. And so they all agreed at that point to do the per parcel in unison, uh, the same way. When some of the municipalities, uh, this time around insisted that we move back to the per population percentage.
I believe that was because farmers who were out in township, two of them multiple parcels.
Parcels.
Were carrying it.
Farmers were nailed on all of it.
Right, yeah, we don't need to nail this.
Well, I, I mean, I can't believe I missed it, but I agree with Dan, I think we need to.
It's on the record.
I I think that we, this is where Jeff Ray comes in.
We can start doing a dance too soon, but.
I mean, I think Jeff Ray needs to be involved and the Southwest Regional Chamber needs to start earning their pay by helping us figure this out. So, you know, again, not to make this last all night, I I I think that we should agree that the general fund should take care of it this year? And then we start working with our other municipalities to come up with a long-term plan.
Tomorrow, and I mean, you gotta, you gotta be pointed on this, I mean, we're really trying to emphasize this. We're trying to tell everybody, there's no money, you know, and we can't keep going to the taxpayers, cause they're bringing out the pitchforks and the torches. You know? And even though I scream for it, I'm gonna be right there with the other four guys. And I don't want to burn up for something I'm not getting or not afforded. So, I'll make the motion to approve paying SMACAS out of the general fund.
Is there support?
This is money out support.
Thank you, member, call please.
Money?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Biaski?
Yes.
Harris.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian, appreciate it, I see you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, moving down to item nine, reports by departments, committees, and boards, starting with our community development report by Director Rich Murphy and his Assistant Director Ashley Riggle.
Thanks, Mayor, Rich Murphy, Community Development Director. First two items are a couple annual permit renewals. First item is a permit renewal for an adult use, sorry, medical marijuana grow, an adult use and grow process permit for Boone Labs. At one oh seven East Alexander Street. Have received their applications, have run the backgrounds due to satisfaction of the police department. And they have paid their fee, annual fee renewal, my recommendation is for approval. And Rick and Max Boone are here this evening, you're probably aware.
How you doing?
They've been at several meetings and, if you have any questions.
I got one question about the medical. Now that recreational is ninety percent of the business, do they buy, are you buying your recreational permit into, since you're sitting here?
Well, right now, it it's, we're in a flux state, I mean, right now we have a medical license and a recreational. And the and the whole business is switching to recreational, but they're allowed to switch inventory from medical to rec. So really, from a business point of view, it's not an impediment, we can do that. But the consumer has chosen to use rec in this part of the state. Closer to Detroit area, it's been higher medical.
Okay. So you can grow medical and sell it as recreational, but you can't grow recreational and sell it as medical?
No, you can do both. You can do both.
You can do both.
You can do both.
So you don't need both licenses or permits, or do you?
Well, we don't, but it's more plans.
It doesn't really matter, you can do it.
Yeah, it's more plans.
You're paying forty-five thousand dollars for each one, basically by the time you get done with the state and the city. Okay, that that's all I really wanted to know.
Look, I I'd like to actually chime in on that. I have told you that there is a trend that we expect to continue where some, not all the medical licenses are being renewed. Cause it's a rapidly changing industry, you go into some of the dispensaries, there's a long line for adult use and a short line for medical. So that presents a potential issue for revenue for the city. And maybe we should be lobbying for a change in the state law, because we could, as medical goes by, you know, taking over more by the market share for adult use, we're gonna receive last round. And it's trending already.
If there's any questions, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the twenty twenty-three marijuana medical adult and adult use grow process permit for Boone's Labs at one oh seven East Alexander Street.
User support?
Support.
Member, call please.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Biaski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Harris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item I have is the twenty twenty-three micro business permit renewal for Walpole Limited Craft Market. We have received their application, they have paid their fees, we've run the backgrounds and satisfaction of it. We can have a police department, my recommendation is approval on this renewal. Just an update, Ashley and I were out there today and toured the facility with Michael and Roy. And it's very impressive and they they don't want to say a date, because they've been saying the day for so long. But they are scheduling the final state approval right now, so we should have a new business opening very soon. A great tour, they're excited, so we're hoping they can make it to finish line now, soon in all that business.
Just, just to go on record, uh, you've checked this out and approved it, I know we've seen it, so recommendations are all good to you guys, okay?
Do you want to go first?
This is money out, move to approve the twenty twenty-three micro business permit renewals for Walpole Limits Craft Market at three oh three Carroll Street.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, number one, please.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Biaski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Harris.
I want to go on record.
You do, yeah.
I thought the five thousand dollars when we initiated was extortionate. I believe the forty thousand dollars in the state is beyond extortionate. So as far as trying to get more fees and funds, uh, these guys for licensing, I I was just trying to make the point. I don't see why a businessman would hide, buy both licenses, if they really don't need them. So, I mean, I was thinking more on the business side of this as opposed to the revenue, because when this first came out, I told everybody down here not to promise, not not to plan on the revenue from this. Taxing these guys to high heaven is not the way to do it, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make that point.
Yep, I I mean, I, my my point to you is just to see what what's trending so that we can set expectations for revenue in the future.
Right, and nothing sneaks up on me, yeah. Okay, item three?
Jerry Flinner is here, he's gonna talk about this, but this is our application for the MDOT TAP grant for phase four. Now, we're up, we're actually on the phase four of the McCoy Creek Trail extension.
This is Jerry Flinner, one six four eight five, right near some street. This is the same process we went through when we started to expand the trail from, um, Shimmer Parkway out to River St. Joe. Now, we're gonna go from River St. Joe out as far as we can, as much as the money we can get. We've got some really good things in mind. Last year when we accepted the three hundred thousand dollar grant from the MDR Trust Fund, um, they encouraged us very highly to come back. They liked our resolution or our our program. We were number three out of a hundred that were, that was submitted and they highly encouraged us to come back, so. We've also got, um, anywhere between one point two million and two million, um, that's within our reach. To expand it from, um, the thirty-one bypass out to old thirty-one, which I would call old thirty-one. So we need you to pass the resolution so that we can go after those grants. We're we're in good shape, we've been pretty trustworthy, there is not at this point a number. But when you go after those grants, there's a ten percent co-pay or whatever, we've been well above that in the past, so. Again, I think our last goal was a hundred and six thousand, we came in with two ten, so.
Is that two townships out there, Jerry? Would that pass through two more townships?
We have to go through Buchanan Township and Niles Township. And I would say ninety percent of it's probably Niles.
Are you gonna approach them too?
We've already met with Niles and Buchanan Township, they're all on board. We actually had a a meeting with those two and the, uh, Bering County, Bering County Harps. To to talk it all through, and everybody's in favor of moving forward, so, with us being the lead.
They don't walk the door when they see you coming?
No.
So you could ask them for money too?
That's what my point was. Yes, absolutely.
Great. Any questions?
So we're writing a blank check right now?
It's not, nobody knows what check to write, without this, we can't even ask how much it is.
We can't go after them. We need this to, uh.
Since I'm such a smart alley, I will move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three zero six dash seventeen as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
Uh, this is money out support.
Thank you, the roll call please.
Whedon?
Yes.
Biaski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Harris.
Thank you, and just make a check out to Jerry Flinner.
You've shared that one before. What'd you do with three hundred thousand dollars?
Go to Vegas?
I might not be sitting here. Thank you.
All right, uh, next item I have is an update on the Ross Sanders RFP. You've been patient with my department as we've worked with our survey team to, um, make sure that what we thought was drawn were the right lines, and they were. So all the survey came, work came back. We have a concept parcel that all parties are in agreement of, including, um, the preservation, Buchanan Preservation Society, including the city, including the Chief Adams, our fire chief. So we are, uh, we spent most of Friday finalizing the RFP, all the final exhibits, we're ready, we have the final draft. We want to go out to market and we'd like to do that, our plan is to do it Wednesday. We're gonna advertise in Bering County Record, we're gonna have it on our website, we're gonna have it posted on social media and everywhere else we can send it. And so we're gonna release the RFP. We have bid openings July tenth, we wanted to get through the holiday, get people that whole week to respond. There will be a bid tabulation July tenth at after three P M, and we'll open the bids. Then the bids will be referred to a review committee, and I'm requesting that committee be Mayor Dennison, Patrick Swem, Peter Leacy, and myself. Representing the City Commission, Buchanan Preservation and my Community Development Department, I'm open to other ideas. We will review the proposals and then we will make a determination back to the commission on a board recommendation. Which, once we have a prospective bidder at the table, that will, that committee is expected to continue those negotiations of the details, uh, of the conveyance of the property. Including the preservation easement, including the final details on the on the parcel, when we actually draw the legal lines to make the split. And any other items that come up in in negotiation.
Great, if you have any questions on the Ross Sanders?
I asked him on a phone call about where we were gonna start as a baseline price, and he says he's gonna advertise this, you said you were gonna advertise this with no baseline price?
Correct, and there is a requirement in the RFP that they must show means to invest over four hundred thousand dollars in terms of, uh, purchase and rehabilitation of the property. And, uh, you know, the, this, all these criteria that have been written in into the, uh, RFP, including the community, uh, impact, the use of the board, community boardroom. The tourism kiosk that has been discussed, the community benefits, the, you know, getting a pillar of the community to come in and do a historic rehab per the preservation easements. Which will be up to the Secretary of Interior Standards, all these benefits were discussed from day one on the project, and that's what are in the RFP that we're going to market.
Rich, I want to make an example, give an example. If you were selling a car and I come and I looked at it, and you said how much you want to give me, you know, I'm gonna look at you like you're nuts to begin with. Because you're not giving me a price to start with, so you're not haggling at all. Now, I know we basically are gonna give this building away, but I still think there should be a baseline. Because if you ask me how much I think it's worth, what do you think I'm gonna offer you? I'm gonna offer you a couple hundred bucks, and you're gonna get insulted.
But here's the argument, Dan, so, I mean, we could sell it for anything, I mean, pick a number. But then, you know, if someone can't afford, so the rehabilitation number is based on quotes that we've gotten in the past on what is required to bring that building back to life. Somebody could buy it for a hundred thousand dollars but then not have the funds to do anything, where that, and we'd be looking at a deteriorating Ross Sanders for the next twenty years until it falls down.
No, that's, I.
But the way the RFP is written is you have to have the financial, uh, ability to bring it to the level required in the RFP. I think that's smart, because we're gonna end up with a piece of history rebuilt that's gonna last for a long time. It doesn't matter what we actually get for the piece of property, honestly, the the condition that it's in, it's not worth much other than historic and, you know, whatever else.
I'm not arguing any of that, I'm not arguing any of that. I mean, it, I mean, this is what we got, this is the RFP. I mean, it, I mean, this is what we got, this is the RFP folks. The thing about it is, is there's still no price in there. And you can have all these stipulations and if they ain't got twenty thousand dollars to cover some of the costs of all of this that we've done, to at least start, and I'm not saying.
They have to have over four hundred thousand.
They, that, that's, so you missed my whole point, it's irrelevant how much money they got in the bank. How much, you know, are they gonna offer you a dollar? I mean, are they gonna be insulted offering you a dollar? I don't know how, I don't know how to communicate it. I mean, there, there's no baseline to start. Jerry, can you help me? You're smart. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You know, even if you only put five thousand dollars out there as a start, you know, we're twenty-five hundred to start as a bid. I'm sure, uh, the Preservation Society's hoping there's only one bid, more than likely, there's only going to be one bid. And I don't care if we give it to them for a dollar to make the contract correct. But all of, all of, all of this is irrelevant as far as I'm concerned if you don't have a baseline to start from. You know, it's like you're selling, you're not selling something. You're offering to give it away as long as you fill all of this curriculum up.
But the baseline is the four hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs that need to be done to the building, that's the baseline.
Every building in this town has had that criteria.
The other thing is, I mean, from day one of this project, that is the earth plan. That, that's exactly what was laid out. We were gonna require, um, a certain amount of investment for this building in terms of the community benefit and it being restored forever in our, in our community. So I, I disagree, I mean, to a certain extent, you guys have already given me approval to go out to RFP.
Not standing where.
No, and I, I agree with, I know what you're trying to say and I agree with you, but the four hundred thousand dollars is the baseline.
And the thing, the point I'm trying to make is every building that's been bought in the city limits of two blocks has had to have a half a million dollars put into it to bring it up to snuff. Whether it's three years with Michael Roland doing it, five years with Alan Robbrandt doing it, seven years with Joe doing it.
But this is a city owned property, the other ones were private, were private actions.
It's not even my argument, that's not even what I'm arguing about. I don't really care, I just wanted to make sure I brought it up.
Okay.
Because I think starting at zero, I mean, even if you only put a thousand dollars on it.
We didn't start at zero, but I guess we are now because it's out there. No, we didn't start at zero, there's no zero mentioned anywhere.
My brain tells me immediately zero.
Okay.
And I got enough money to cover this bullshit, I'm sorry. But the thing about it is, is that's the argument that I'm trying to make, is you're not gonna get an offer, I mean, if you're selling something, you should put a price on it. You can move away from your price, you can negotiate your price. But if you don't have a price, you can't negotiate your price. And I didn't put nothing out there, anybody that's looked at it didn't know already.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, I just disagree.
I'm glad we disagreed with you too.
Okay, any other questions on the Ross Sanders?
No. All right, so, uh, expect that RFP to go out Wednesday. Um, all right, last thing was a grants update before we have our Munchy Mondays update. Uh, I was here, I think in March, I gave you guys the grant update, um, I updated this document with all our new grants. I'm gonna use this ongoing 'cause, uh, I think it's efficient to talk about it. The gr- the green is what we have already received, over one point one million in the last year and a half. The blue is what we are, have out there right now in terms of applications. So, since I last talked to you, we flipped two over to green. So we got in-kind assistance from NOVA, a federal, uh, organization, and we did get the grant from M E D C for the zoning. So, uh, that was thirty grand and then some in-kind assistance from, uh, the National Oceanic Atmospheric Agency. Uh, so that's a federal agency to help us with our riverfront project. We have several grants out there, hot irons in the fire, um, including the State Land Bank light elimination for the demolition of the feed mill, um, three hundred sixty-six thousand. We're, we're pushing our Spark Grant, a new improved application for the Riverfront Drive Reconstruction to Round Two, that's a million dollars. Uh, we're applying for, no match on that. We have an active grant applied for Michigan Passport for the Victory Park Playground Equipment, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. We have a D N R grant for an acc- ADA Accessible Kayak Launch down at Riverfront Drive for three hundred thousand. We have the McCoy Trails Creek Extension, um, now, a lot of this, we have two point four million dollars in potentially coming from Congressman Wahlberg. If that comes in, it's gonna change a lot of our, uh, local match required, probably wipe most of our local match requirement out. So that's why there's a to be determined figure. But, you know, just for the benefit of the members of the public, we're very aggressive on the grants. Last year and a half, we, over one point one million have been awarded to the city. Right now, we have two point one million applied for on the state level and two point four million, uh, potentially from our congressman. So that's, uh, one point one in the can, in the, in the till and four point five-ish going after. So, uh, uh, I'll keep, continue to update you on, uh, the grants, uh, there's various deadlines and when we know, we'll know by the demo grant in July. Most of the state grants, uh, December and then, uh, Jerry, I'm sure will keep us updated on the Congressman Wahlberg grant.
So.
Rich, think after this. It's one of the things that even at the very beginning when I started on the commission that people had complained, complained and made note of and complained however you wanna, you know, state it, that, you know, what are we going after? We know the grants are there, we know that, you know, there's, there's money that's available and so I, I commend you and your team for continuing to push the limit and trying to find as many grants as possible through the state and through the federal government because, uh, the, this right here is something that, I mean, that you can hang your hat on for years because there's one thing that was definitely not, uh, the transparency about the money that we were going after. And we probably weren't at the level that we are today, which is sad, but it's really exciting to see that this is the avenue to which we look to cover costs first and foremost and then go back and ask the commission and the city taxpayer money to do so, so. And this, this may not seem as significant to others as it does to people who've really been harping about what are we doing? I mean, this, this, this speaks volumes. It's, it's absolutely amazing.
Hope to have some good news for you guys.
It's not, it's not easy, so. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
I want to raise a point. We had talked, we were talking about tearing down the feed mill. And we had talked about piecemealing it and we've got a very interested party in it, so. And I just wanted to bring it up while we were talking about it. Where would that put us if we decided to allow somebody to take the, um, silos down? Or one of the silos or two of the silos? Would that screw us up in a grant?
Well, I mean, what, I, we've been through this whole discussion and I think we landed, the consensus of the commission was we were gonna allow some pieces carted off the property, which I think they have been. And then the other pieces, uh, whoever's interested with them is now, has a discussion directly with Gentry demolition, the awarded contractor. So, contractors always wanna get rid of stuff, that's kinda their business now. If they see a opportunity to scrap it or sell it, uh, sublet the property, that's, that's on the contractor right now.
But we haven't awarded a contract yet, that's why I'm asking.
Well, we have a, a recommended awarty, the only reason we haven't awarded the contract is because we're waiting on the grant.
Oh, we've had the discussion.
Cause we don't have the money, correct?
Right, so that's why I'm raising it again, because if we don't have the money, we can't tear it down.
I think we're just going in a circle and that all the engineers have said no. Let the, let the demolition contractor deal with the piecemealing, city doesn't wanna get involved in that. There's insurance requirements, there's liability concerns, so, um, that's why we've gone this path. So I thi- I think the, the plan is to hold steady on that, see if we get the grant. Got some initial good feedback on the grant and we have a very competitive application, but it's a competitive process. So, we should know that in July. In July, we'll have a message, we'll either say, we got a contractor, we got an awarded bid. And then we can tell whoever is interested to contact the contractor.
What if we don't get the grant?
Then we're gonna have to talk about Plan B, go out and get money, which is what every other city in the United States is in when they don't get a grant.
Okay, but we paid Blue Link thirty thousand dollars, what is their part in that? Are they continuously gonna be looking until we find somebody to tear it down? Or are they done once we lose?
We have bid specs.
Point Blue stays monitoring that, yeah, they'll stay on monitoring that for infinity until that's.
So that they're on.
Yeah, they.
I mean, I just wanted to clarify that because it's not really that common a knowledge.
Yeah, they stay on the property, they continuously monitor, that's what's, they have on site and that's the service that they continue to do regardless of the demolition or not.
I mean, cause I fully understand why we went the direction we did, but on the other hand, it's on a lot of what ifs.
Well, I mean, I think all of this is what, eventually we find out whether or not we can get the.
Yeah, we had to go, we had to jump through the hoops because we didn't know how much the demo was gonna be, you know? If it was fifty grand, we might've been able to pay for it ourselves, right? It came in at three sixty-six, well, now we have a great grant opportunity, perfect timing, so we're in a great position right now. If we don't get it, we're gonna have to come back and say, well, let's find another way. That's, I mean, that's kind of the, the business we're in, it's, it can be a tough racket sometimes, but, you know, I, I'm feeling great about our opportunity and we've done everything we could to get this grant, so.
Well, will you state to the record when we're supposed to know if we got this or not?
July is whatever.
That's it, that's the best you can do? Well, I do thank you, Rich, I really do, and I know when I hammer you, I do, I hammer you.
The county's been very good to work with, by the way. Uh, just, I wanna thank, uh, Brian Sett, Dan Fetti and Katie Montoya. Uh, they had to be our vehicle to apply for this and fully support our, our application. We, we did a lot of the preparation work, but they submitted it for us, um, so.
Well, they're kinda scared that we're gonna hit them up for some money, ain't they? I mean, because they got grant money.
They're a part of the project, I would look at it that way.
Rich, do you, do you find that your continuous presence in front of these individuals, and then Jerry could probably speak to this too, that, do you find the process simpler because of that, like, there's, there's a level of trust that's built that, what brings to the table? And I, I think that's crucial for people to understand that it's not the significance of just the application, it's the individuals and the proper manner to which you present that and how you represent the city. And that's a, that's a huge factor, I have to believe.
Yeah.
That even though it's not quantifiable and papered, the personal aspect that you bring to the application and, and the desire and the, and, and the personality that is presented, it has to have an effect. Because everything in, in that situation is all about, for lack of a better term, schmoozing the right people to understand the project we're doing and the significance.
Okay, it's, I mean, it's building a culture, it's building a, a reputation.
Right.
You know, when we, when Jerry and his, and our team put together the, um, the grant for the trail, we were third in, out of a hundred.
Yeah, that's huge.
Communities. When they see Buchanan's application now, they're like, Buchanan, let's see what they have to say. Because they were one of the best applications last round. So I think we just keep submitting quality. We're gonna, we're gonna have disappointing moments, we're, we're gonna have, you know, I, I feel like all our grant applications are excellent, but, you know, the reality is you don't win every grant, so we're gonna have some disappointing moments, we'll just keep going.
Are you finding it all that once you're in this cycle of, of grant knowledge, that it gives you access and ability to find out a lot of things?
Like you said, that once they hear that Buchanan's involved, that we've, we've asked for money and we've presented, completed the program. A lot of things over each of us, they get grants and the money just kinda disappears if the project doesn't be completed. And if I can, can I go on?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, one of the guys that's on the McCoy Creek Trail Board, George Pragoy. When we went up to that presentation, uh, where they gave us the award for three hundred thousand dollars, George was number two on that committee. So we didn't know that, but boy, when they saw George up there, I mean, it was significant.
He was the D N R for years.
Yeah, he was head of the D N R, so. Those people up there, he was talking to the president like they were, you know, next door neighbors.
So once again, I mean, I'm just, I, I, that's something that's often overlooked, but relationships are extremely important. And I realize that everybody has opinions about things and, and the manner to which they conduct themselves, but when you start to look at the bigger picture outside of the scope of what we see every day in front of us, relationships and attitude and presence have such an important role that if you don't believe that, then it's, it's gonna be a difficult time if you go out there with the same manner to which you may handle yourself in a private room. So, I commend you for that, cause that is, that is gonna go along very for us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Good evening, I just wanted to, hi, I just wanted to give you an update on Munchy Mondays. I don't know if you guys have, I know a couple of you have seen Pumped and New there, but I don't know if you've had a chance to go down. Um, it's been pretty busy, it was more busy than I was expecting. Uh, we have between eight hundred and a little over a thousand every day, um, that we do this, and we've been running it for five weeks. I got a more exact count last week and it was nine hundred ninety-four, um, that we had down there last week, so. Um, and I wouldn't believe it myself except I take out my, my clicker, my counter and I'll sit there for an hour and just count while I'm working on things and I get about a hundred and twenty-five if I'm out there for an hour, so. Um, it's really popular, it's really fun and I wanna give a lot of credit to our cannabis retailers who have helped us promote this, in particular Cannabista, um, and Zen Leaf and Red Bud Roots have all really helped us with this. They've been promoting it through their newsletters, um, and you'll see people out there that you don't see every day because it's got a lot of outer towners coming and it's really nice, so. Um, I wanted to give you that update and tell you about how we've been reaching our goals. So, one of our goals was to engage with the cannabis retailers and I'm excited to say that they've taken this and run with it and they were very positive, I've gotten calls from them, just like, thank you for thinking about our needs and including us in this. So, I've been very excited about that partnership. Um, I also wanted to, our group also wanted to test the market on Mondays because we often have a lot of businesses, um, closed on Mondays and it's kind of, uh, Randy went out there to count, um, traffic and it was a sixth of what it is every other day of the week prior to this, um, which is kind of a ghost town on Mondays. Uh, obviously that's not the case anymore, so, uh, I wanted to see if we could maybe be a seven day a week business downtown and it seems like the market is there. Um, and then, my most important goal was to activate Days Avenue and to get a little bit more traffic pulled more towards the common and towards the end of, uh, that downtown region and to see if we could get pedestrian traffic, people using it and just see it brought to life. So, I'm very excited that those goals seem to be being met and the community has responded and I'm, I'm overwhelmed really with how excited people are about it and what the feedback's been, um, and it's, it's great to see that, uh, buy-in from the community. Um, I think that it's a good thing and it can keep getting better. There are some suggestions about, um, we have everybody out there on generators. Part of that was just to make sure that we could get it started without any infrastructure needs and just get it going. So I told everyone, no, like, you have to be self-sufficient, but we are, it, it causes fumes, they're loud. Uh, we have people that are donating their time to do live music down there that are hard to hear. Um, and then like I said, the fumes are, it's not a problem, but it could be better. So, I'm thinking about how we can fix that and I wanna get some input from you guys. We could, um, and I've talked to Mike about it and I'm sure he can give you better information than I can, but we've talked about, um, increasing the electric usage over on that side or potentially kinda shifting the event closer to the farmers market area on the other side. Um, so those are just some ideas you might see in flux over, uh, the next couple of weeks. It has been planned to end July thirty-first, but I do have, I'm turning people away because we have so many people that wanna be a part of it, um, and they're asking if we can extend it, do another round, so. At this point, I'm saying no, but I'm not against it necessarily, I just kinda wanna give ourselves a cutoff where we can change and, and kind of set things up for even better. We do continue it past and continue it into the fall, so. I wanted to see if you guys had any feedback for me or any questions for me on this now that we're five weeks into this and.
So, I just wanna say, like, I worked on this up and, and an individual who comes up here to go to the local stores and I brought a friend with him and then he saw the Munchy Mondays sign and he said, this is absolutely amazing. He said, why doesn't everybody do this past cannabis? So, I mean, we're already reaching, how, we already knew we were reaching outside of our state. So, I mean, we're already reaching, we already knew we were reaching outside of our state because of the purchase of cannabis. But the significance of that wonderful, you know, advertisement and the fact that he saw it, and that was his first instinct, was to say, why doesn't everybody do it? That's a huge sentiment because now, you know, one of the things we heard from the cannabis roundtable was that, you know, we need to make ourselves a destination, not only for cannabis, but for other items that are in our city. And this is, you know, this is somewhat of a catalyst. This is something that we can look back in this beginning. It starts to bring people in and starts to recognize their entire city, not just their purchase, so. Thank you for everything you've done in that.
Thank you. It's been a group effort, and, uh, I would like to just call out Lisa Gustafson, um, by name, uh, because she, and, she, but, orders that City Own Lot, um, and she's led up the city use, uh, her furniture, which is beautiful furniture. And she's also been scheduling the talent that's been out there. I'd also like to say thank you to the Home Source Group, who's been providing some entertainment for kids, like face painting. They're bringing out a couple of other things for free. Um, so, I mean, it's a really great community effort. And it's an example of how we can mesh, um, some of the more cannabis and family-friendly. Because it's not a cannabis event. It's just the cannabis retailers helping promote this event. And I think it's a great example of those two coming together to promote the lifestyle. I was talking to a couple of our vendors who have tried taking this to other cities or have tried doing something similar. And they said it's just not the same because nobody has what Buchanan has. The fact that we're right by the creek, the fact that it's so family-centric, the fact that everybody knows, you know, bumps in and talks to you. And it's, um, it's not really replicable.
I was just gonna say, to me, that's one of the best parts of going down there for dinner is you get to see people you don't normally get to see during the week. Um, so it's a real community event. But I did have a question maybe for Tim and Harvey too. Have, have we had any incidents? Has there been any problems with Munchy Mondays?
No, we have. Uh, Asher and myself have talked a little bit about, uh, making little changes down there to make things safer. Cause when you have pedestrians, when you have vehicles trying to go down the same road, that's not a good thing. Um, so, yeah, we've had these conversations. Uh, we monitor it quite a bit, so no incidents right now. Everybody's, uh, being good, so.
Yeah, it did grow faster, I think, than I was expecting. And I don't know if you guys were anticipating that. But it is having, the good side is it's a pretty steady stream. I don't know if you guys have been there for any extended period of time, but it's not like a thousand people and zero people.
Right, it's not a big rush.
Yeah, so that part is really good. Uh, one of the downsides is there is, I, I don't know if I should say it. It's a factor, maybe not a downside, is that we do still have traffic going through and it is hard to see with the trucks. So we've been talking about layout and how to make that better, you know? Do we temporarily shut roads down? Do we try to move it all to one side? And so we're working together to try to make it, um, safer and even more family-friendly than it is now.
One of, one of the things I heard, excuse me, one of the things I heard is like the first Munchy Monday that we did, uh, they had a little band thing going on at the Commons. And people were wondering if there's anything like that that we could do over there. Excuse me. That we could do over there, you know, at the Commons area, that would entice people, you know, to, to utilize that, you know? Don't dare eat your burrito instead of trying to cram in, you know, all, all right there in that parking lot and, and using Gustafson's furniture. You know, if, if there's anything, and, uh, well, Dan and I were looking over something here at our last meeting. And, and, and the, the high school has a, uh, a chorus band type thing, you know? And I thought, you know, that'd be cool because, you know, you're gonna draw those people in that had their kids playing. And then other people, uh, that just wanna just sit in their lawn chair and listen to the high school kids, you know, play their music. So that was one of the questions that's been posed to me. And, you know, uh, just if you could come up with something like that. I mean, you know, you can't do it every Monday, but, you know, on specific ones or just at random, you know? Like I said, talk to the high school chorus or the, uh, the band or whatever, yeah, chorus band. And see if they could do something and, and just anybody, you know? I mean, it used to be, we used to have a, a huge range of talent in this town. And this goes back, and, yeah, most of the people in here, except the new people in town, you know, would remember when we even did our Labor Day festivals and all the, all of the people that used to come down that were locals, they would sing on the, in the bandstand and stuff, like the Cornwells and, I don't know. There was just, there was just a lot of different people. They'd just come down and do it for kicks. So I, I don't know.
I agree with you. Uh, there are very few bands that wanna do it for kicks, uh, but I wish there were more. The one we did have that was amazing that first time, um, Lisa ended up paying them out of pocket. Um, because they're really good and it's hard, it's hard to ask somebody talented to come, you know, do something for free. But I agree with you that I would like to expand it and have more. And I also think the Common would be a great place as we are getting, this event is getting really big, so I think it would be great.
Yeah, you know, you got Michael Rowland's group that's, you know, the.
My husband's in that group. My husband's in that group, and yes, he does play for free, so.
Yeah, you know, just, just stuff like that, you know?
Take that off the record.
It would attract, it would attract people.
Yeah.
You know, and like I said, they'd sit in the grass, eat their burrito, then go home or stick around and buy another burrito or, uh, you know, whatever. Something from Tony.
Is this doing anything for bricks and mortar at all? I know they're closed on Mondays.
Actually, the ones that are open, I have gone and asked them about their numbers because I was wanting to confirm that if, if it was harming, helping, whatever. Um, and what I've heard is it's either exactly the same or it's helping and they're getting more traffic, so.
So there's, they're actually thinking about eating in town, so that's what we've actually got going on.
Yes, and I did see.
And I would suggest moving it to the other side. Get out of the street. You got your electric over there and everything, I believe, on hand.
Yeah, the biggest concern is furniture. Um, they can still cross to the other side to go sit down. But part of what's nice about the environment there is we have the places to sit, the shade, the, um, the string lights. It creates, um, an, an environment to have everybody close together too is different than when everybody's spread out cause it does force you to interact. I hear you and I'm with you. I'm just trying to think of a long-term way to, to expand that environment, but get the same feeling of you're bumping at your neighbor.
A year though, right?
Mm-hmm. We are. I think that in the future, we'd also expand that if they wanted to participate in this event, they would have an, an additional fee so that we could segue that into more infrastructure. But I think it was essential to get this off the ground because even the first five vendors that we had, I had to convince. Because they had to see it be successful. And now that it is, it's now they're knocking down my door and we can, we can change things for the next round. But I think it was the right, I, I think it was the right way to go to get it off the ground, but I do think we can charge more in the future.
On the financial side of that too, we have more revenue in food truck permits from the thirty dollars than we averaged it last year.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure of that.
So.
Yeah, cause they have a.
But I mean, you're talking infrastructure and everything else too.
Do you think moving it, like, moving them into the parking lot that we own, you know, that all of the trucks, do you think that's gonna hurt?
I'm sorry, which lot?
The parking lot where they're at now. They're at that one half right there by Gustafson's. What about moving them on, make more of them onto where the parking is for the current guests? Is that?
The only trouble is that we have people coming in and parking for other businesses. Um, so it, it's a big, you know, it's a, it's a puzzle. And the fact that it is big is great, but it also, we're facing new questions. So, yeah, if, we, we don't have a genius layout yet, but we're looking at it.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think.
I'd rather have this problem than.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we realized the scope as, when it took off. I know, you know, I seen Tony down there walking his dog and stuff earlier, and, and there was a ton of people over there, you know? And, uh, you know, that's great. That was, what, three o'clock? That, two thirty? Ton of people.
It's a good problem to have.
Yeah, and, you know, that's a good problem to have, so.
Thank you very much, Ryan.
Yep, thanks, Ashley. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item B and conceding to Mr. George.
Okay, I'll provide an update on some of our construction projects. The Department of Public Works Construction update. The pre-engineered metal building delivery is scheduled for tomorrow and the next day, and I believe there's about seven semi loans, correct, Mike? So that's, that's in the works. The materials start being delivered tomorrow. They performed a mandatory wetland delineation, uh, task that was, that had to be done. And it was done last week, and the permit approval on that, which is required, should be done around the sixth of July. And, and another part of that is the groundwater and soil sampling that has been performed. The results are being evaluated to determine if grant funds will be available, uh, to assist in soil removal. And the final determination, the final timeline for that is probably mid-July, somewhere there. So with those, we probably start construction in August. That's, that's what we're hoping for now. We're having a groundbreaking cer- uh, ceremony planning meeting. We can't just have a groundbreaking. You have to have a planning meeting prior to, so we look like we know what we're doing.
The meeting before the meeting.
Yeah, meeting before the meeting. And that's Wednesday, June twenty-one at ten AM. It'd be nice if a couple of commissioners could come, and so check your calendars, and we'll be getting back to just see if maybe a couple of you are available for that.
Sure.
Larry's gonna check his busy schedule.
So, so that's where we are on the DPW construction. Uh, hopefully, we'll get break down in, uh, August. The Front Street USDA, uh, downtown infrastructure, well and iron treatment project, that's, it's a big project, Front Street. Uh, the design engineering is nearly near completion. And updated cost information was provided over a weekend, and it was eye-opening. The original project cost was about twenty point two million dollars. Updates were provided in August twenty-two with increases in the twenty-five percent range. Since then, the most recent cost update expected the cost at about thirty-two million, uh, fifty-eight percent greater than the original, uh, estimates. The engineers attribute the cost increases to the bidding environment for process, road, and underground projects, uh, inflation, increased scope and cost, and revised costs. So the available funding we have right now is about twenty point two million dollars, and that includes one point seven million from the general fund. With a thirty-two million dollar project now, it leaves us with a shortfall of about eleven point two million dollars, plus the, um, one point eight from the general fund. There's concerns with our cash flow with the existing debt services. Right now, we're gonna be paying about one point one million dollars in debt service next year. We need to take a real hard look at the project to determine our needs, our wants, and the direction going forward. And so that'll be, uh, job one this coming week or so.
Are you gonna do that?
Do which?
Look at our wants and our needs?
Well, I wish I knew a little more background about the.
Can I be on that committee before anybody tells me?
I wish I knew more background on the urgency of each of these projects and where they were initiated and, and things like that. We definitely need to take a hard look at what we have planned and utilize the funds we do have. Because even if we, even if we do proceed, there's still loans out there that we have to pay loan payments on.
Let me ask you a question. If we, so if we go back to the drawing board and we, and we redraw, or if, say we change the scope of work, is that gonna change our funding or what?
Well, if we can do it in bits and pieces and chunks and instead of the thirty-two million.
If we just dig up the pipes and replace the pipes that are failing. And, and forget about flower.
I thought about that, America. Every option should be on the table at this point.
I agree.
Every.
What you clawed at made my heart stop. That's, that's, that's really, really scary.
It's not the guy's email you wanna look at on Monday morning. Mondays are rough enough.
You're hoping that that's zero, was that another line to carry down or something, and there was only?
I, I don't have a good answer to that one, but we, I'm gonna be digging into it this, in this coming week though.
Well, I interrupted you. Do, is there something else you need to continue telling us?
No, that's it.
I've talked to you enough. I know when you're closing, you know.
It's, it's time to make decisions now.
I wanna be on that committee. I don't care what anybody else says because I have the ideas, I have the know-how, and I know how to do it. I want to be on that committee. I wanna make that very public right now because I am not on any other committees. And that is very well, well orchestrated.
It'd be a whole commission decision.
I, I'm just gonna be a huge.
I know, I'm making it very public right now.
It'd be special.
What did, I'm sorry, can you repeat those numbers again?
Sure.
Who it from?
The original project was twenty point two million dollars. Updates were provided in August twenty twenty-two with increases in the twenty-five percent range. The most recent cost update expected the cost at thirty-two point one million dollars, fifty-eight percent greater than originally.
As long as we're talking about this, did anybody ever reach out? Cause I reached out to three contractors, just to say, change the subject, just to give everybody an idea. Did anybody ever reach out to you, Rich, about the pavilion as far as a contractor? Did you get ahold of a couple, or a couple guys get ahold of you?
Yeah.
Okay, well, they were very small contractors. So, I mean, and the only reason why I re- raise that is because we had it posted for six weeks and we didn't get anybody. You know, so. Do we need to look at a different contractor altogether?
Well, we're gonna have to change the scope of work all week.
We don't have a contractor right now.
We, we don't have, we.
A different engineer.
No, you're in.
We're gonna have to change the scope of work.
The agreement's already signed. You're with Brian Newhoff.
And they know what they're doing. I mean, it, it's not them. It's, oh my God, I can't believe that. You gotta let us know that before we, and now I feel like my jaw's on the floor. Um, let's move down to item C. Thanks, Tim. Thanks for having us do. Um, item C.
Everything else is in great detail.
Well, I do have one other question, even though we're contracted with Brian Newhoff. Is there any way we can compare without going through the whole process? I mean, is, I mean, is there other engineers?
You're already on your time limit for this loan. You're already, you're already stretched thin with this USDA loan. We have to have something going by the end of this year, I believe, is what Bristol said.
Or what?
Or we have to refinance.
Well, if we can't afford any of it, it doesn't matter anyhow.
Well, we have to replace the infrastructure.
I, I mean, that's the bottom line is it doesn't.
But you can't do that without doing a program.
You know, the, in his email, he said that across the board, engineers are seeing eighty percent higher than estimates coming in. So it's the environment that we're in. It's nothing particular to Buchanan, Michigan.
Or the engineers.
And it is a scope issue. We'll have to look at the scope and we'll have to phase stuff. That's the answer.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I'd just like to see things right, that's all. I'm sorry. I just like to, you know, somebody can tell me anything, you know?
We'll enjoy the contract and everything.
I mean, well, I know we're a contract, but I'm just, you know, the numbers, maps and all that good stuff.
I mean, yeah, this is gonna, is on all of us.
This is what Tim's gonna deep dive into and deep dive with you guys, so.
Well, that's kind of a farewell present, I have to.
Okay, let's move down to the assessing department and seeing Mindy Quokker.
Um, I'm your part-time assessor right now. Actually, Mindy's got an audit, um, coming up with the state of Michigan. So she was just trying to go through everything and make sure everything's perfect before her audits come out, um, next year. It's just a couple of updates. They were really simple things. The resolution was just, um, sort of the state form instead of the City of Buchanan's form. That's the first one.
None of the criteria changed.
None of the criteria changed. It was just that they preferred to have used the state form for that, um, poverty exemption guideline. Uh, the policy and procedure was the same thing.
It got passed in twenty fifteen, I believe, right?
And the same with the inspection. It was just updating the hours. It was all just making sure that she was ready to go for audit.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion, like a one?
This is, this is money I'd move to approve that twenty twenty-three point oh six slash eighteen as presented.
Accusers support?
Second.
Move on, hopefully.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Harris.
And then the same for the policies and procedures, right?
Yep.
I'll move to approve the policy and procedure for assessor inquiries and meetings as presented.
Accusers support?
This is money I'll support.
Money?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski? Yeah, it's big.
Yes, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was there a motion for the number three?
I get it.
So, may everyone take that one? Okay, I'll move to approve the updated policy for public inspection and copying of assessing records.
I'll second.
Accusers, please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item ten. Uh, I asked just to have a, a quick discussion on the playground equipment, uh, that we approved. Uh, I asked just to have a, a quick discussion on the playground equipment that we approved. It was the last one, right? Um, for Catherine Park through the Buchanan area recreation board. Fisher Whedon forwarded the quote in an email today. I think we're doing that, 'cause it, it got me reading it again. And I just, I had some questions that I think we need to discuss, just because I think there may be some added costs in there, and we need to figure out what we're doing. So some of the, some of the verbiage in the fine print, if you will, that quote, it says, "This quote does not include safety surfacing or border chambers. And in accordance with CPSC guidelines for public playground safety, safety surfacing is required for any commercial playground equipment with a fault height, and the owner is responsible for furnace surfacing, blah, blah, blah." And then the other thing it said was that you needed, you needed to have in writing what kind of surfacing you were gonna have before you signed the contract with them, so they know how deep to install the poles and all that good stuff. So that seemed like something that we needed to figure out with the barb before we order any equipment. And, uh, there was, there was something else in the fine print about site and prep work, and I wasn't sure. It says, "Site and prep work required of the owner must be completed prior to the installation, otherwise there's a fee of nineteen hundred dollars." And I don't, I wasn't sure what that was, um, so we, we may need to ask them. And then the other thing that I read in there, uh, there was different delivery times, 'cause some of the equipment comes from different manufacturers. So they're gonna be short, showing up at different times, and I, I assume we're going to deliver or unload them and keep them at Catherine Park. So I wanted to see what your thoughts were on that, Mike. 'Cause we have to store it within a hundred yards of where they're gonna install it, otherwise there's an additional fee. So we have, will have to keep it at Catherine Park when we unload it. Um, but then there was also an additional cost. They require a tender dumpster. And that was it, other than the removal of the equipment. I was gonna, gonna ask my, what his thoughts were on removing the equipment at Catherine and how long it, it thought it might take.
What are you removing? And do I have to do it nicely, or can I just...
No, you have to do it nicely, 'cause it has to go to Victory Park.
Are we removing everything at Catherine?
I don't think we've actually gone into that level of discussion about what exactly.
I'm gonna tag that.
There's none. There's none.
We got a screen set and then one little...
There's a, there's a plastic slide.
Plastic tube. But I think that, and I'm not sure how to go about finding out, but I think we need to figure out what kind of safety surface we're gonna have and what the cost of that will be. I mean, if we get that rubber mulch, we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna contain it, otherwise it's gonna get kicked around and spread all over the park, and then we're gonna need more.
Yes.
It's rock down there by McCoy Creek Park.
Big gravel, yeah.
But I don't, that's what they use at the playgrounds at the schools too, is pee. Well, that's what they used at Ottawa when they originally put it in.
I think everything's been changed over to rubber mulch now, though, hasn't it?
Well, that's why, I think it's either rubber mulch, mulch, or that weird foamy asphalt-looking material is usually different colors, but that's extremely expensive.
So we replace safety with inhalation hazards?
I don't know. I, I mean, I just, I don't know how. Do we wanna kick this back to the barb to look into those, or before we order the equipment to make sure we know?
For the, for the sake of time, I don't have a problem here having that, to find out quotes to, we gotta, I just assess the space that we are, you know, my, I can go out and measure and get some assessment on, on space and give a...
Figure out how much we would need, how much.
How long is that stuff gonna be on-site before it goes in?
Doesn't say.
Um, it doesn't really say. The, I mean, the kind of cover they're about by saying that it's, it's made by different manufacturers is gonna show up at different times, but they don't really...
And when I talk to you, the equipment that I went out and got the quote on this, the equipment that they have available, it's in the standard colors, ready to ship. So they, they probably do that, like you said, they cover themselves, but they said they have that type of equipment available, ready to ship, because they build it that way. And the cover scheme is just a standard red, yellow, and...
Well, the original bid, bid was substantially different than the one we passed though, too, and what happened there? Can you tell us? No, the original was thirty-two and ten.
Uh, so the original was, uh, included the additional two thousand dollars from the tax. We were given a break in tax, 'cause we're a municipality, so that was removed from the total overall cost. And then the only thing, the quote that you had seen, they were both in there, but the one you looked at was for without installation, and then the one that he's got in front of him is with installation, without taxation.
No, the one was thirty-two thousand dollars for equipment, plus ten thousand dollars for installation. And the one we got Monday night was forty-two thousand dollars, was twenty, fifty, twenty thousand dollars installation, and that's, and I don't, I looked everywhere to find that copy. I know there's things that come into my mind that aren't explained, but I know I've seen this, and I'm gonna have to find it.
Yeah, there was never, I, I mean, I've got them on my phone, but there was never a thirty-two thousand. There was a forty thousand plus twenty thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars for installation.
I'm very happy to kick it back. I'm glad you called it, Sean.
Well, I, I mean, I'm just, regard, I mean, I don't think six thousand dollars in a playground thing isn't earth-shattering when we're talking thirty million dollars for the infrastructure budget. What I'm more concerned about is, is, you know, going in blindly to what the, the safety surface is gonna be and then ending up with another fifty thousand dollar bill. Um, 'cause that stuff can get expensive, and we need to figure out how we're gonna...
Can we still do that?
...up and around the equipment. I don't know. That's, I don't know enough, I don't know what's required. I mean, this says there are, there are CPC, CPSC guidelines for, uh, safety servicing. So I, I, you know, we can't just put in rock if it's not, if it's not allowed, and then when a kid falls and breaks his ribs, is the city gonna get sued? I mean, that's the things we need to figure out.
So what Dan was looking at was a thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars for the price of the equipment, eighteen hundred dollar shipping, six percent tax, which was removed, and then there was a twenty thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, which brought the total to over sixty thousand.
And that was that sheet that we had that...
So I, I guess that, you know, if, if you can get back with Rachel and the rest of the barb and...
Yeah.
And just to write this so that...
We can get that on the agenda for Winston.
Yeah. You have the meeting this week.
While you're talking to them, while you're talking to them, can you ask them, I'm assuming, other places where they deliver them, they don't have the means to move the equipment onto site after it's delivered, is what my guess is.
No, I think we're gonna have to unload it off of a flatbed and then move it across Catherine Park and store it in the corner or somewhere.
So my understanding is that the contractor takes care of that. So the reason that came up is when I asked them about having a supervisor versus the full installation, that, when she, does it say differently that they don't unload?
This says seven hundred and fifty dollars a truck to unload.
That, probably because they unloaded, that's probably like, we paid them in the contract. I, I'll confirm.
No, no, this says that we're, we, we are responsible for unloading, and if they have to, then it's seven fifty a truck load, is what they're saying.
Can you ask them what, how, what the timeline is, 'cause I'm telling you, you don't want that stuff sitting there for a week.
Why?
So I have a forklift. I have a front-end loader that we're gonna move it with, is my point.
Well, then I was gonna ask you, I mean, does it make sense for us, how many times do we have to handle it? Does it make sense to move it somewhere safer so that it doesn't end up missing?
Well, if it's gonna, if you, that's why I'm asking timelines. If you have more than a few days, you're probably gonna wanna store it at Ralph's, somewhere we'll move equipment out or something, put it in our trucks or something. I don't know how big this stuff is, but, I mean, it's gotta be shipped on trailers, but, you know?
But I'm sure, I mean, I'm sure it comes on skids, you know?
Yes. I mean, it'll be no problem for us to move it. That's what I'm getting at. We're only a hop, skip, and a jump from Catherine Park to move it over there. You know, if they're coming on this day, we can move it the day before, or we can move it early.
My guess is they're not gonna show up the day after it's delivered.
That's what, that's what my point is. I, I, and you don't want it sitting there for a...
I mean, really, I think we ought to just plan on the fact that it's gonna get unloaded at Catherine Park, or maybe we just tell them to show up somewhere else, and then just unload it.
That's what I would prefer, is they show it up at Ralph's.
So we, so we can figure that out when we, when we sign the contract.
Right, okay.
When I call, I'll call and talk to them, all right? Tim, I know you had plans too, but...
But she was gonna confirm that quote and provide timelines and things like that.
Oh, perfect. Okay, yeah, so we just...
So I, I hear what everybody's saying, and we'll confirm all those things. Do we need to mo, to motion, something, what motion was that we made before?
I don't think so. I mean, it was contingent on that pricing. I just need to figure out some of those other things. I mean, I, we don't know what...
Either we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to either pay for, you know, some kind of a safety material. So that'll be coming before us, but I think we just need to navigate around what's the best option right now in terms of costs.
We need to reach out to the school superintendent and see what they did for the schools, too. Because I know when we did Ottawa, we had an advisor that sounded great.
She wasn't there, though, for that, some of the...
Well, she should be able to say that.
At that voice, right?
And prices, you know, I mean, everything's changed so much.
It has, and so, when I talked to AAA State of Play, she had made it very clear that the supervisor option is available, but the cost to have that person be on-site would be very close to the cost that they quoted, because that would take away from that individual and their team being on-site for another full job that...
I want that job.
Yeah, no doubt.
Well, it's a contractor. That's what it is.
Exactly, right. And then when I spoke with another company out of Holland with a local contractor to just get an idea of what cost, he couldn't even get close to twenty thousand. He was very funny. He's like, that is an exceptional deal to get installation done on playground equipment at that level. 'Cause I sent him exactly the equipment we purchased.
Did you tell him you were a private entity and you weren't government?
No.
Did you see what the price was on that? I'm not being sarcastic.
No, I, I get what you're saying.
Sometimes they do.
But I think with, what we were presenting with tonight on the increase in cost, just to do the infrastructure, I'm not surprised at the increase in cost for everything else, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's move down to, uh, new business. Ordinance twenty twenty-three point oh six slash four thirty-six, consider the first reading ordinance twenty twenty-three point oh six slash four thirty-six, and ordinance to amend the Buchanan City Code of Ordinances to provide for prohibition and abatement of nuisances, and to repeal and replace ordinance sections thirty-eight twenty-six, thirty-eight twenty-nine, subsection three, and sections thirty-eight forty-seven, thirty-eight fifty-four, thirty-five, Article thirty, and parts thereof in conflict or with. The floor is yours, Mr. Ian.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, uh, tonight, I'd like to just answer any questions or, um, talk a little bit about updating the ordinance. As we, uh, go through, through and see our ordinances and see how they work, um, sometimes we have to update them. This is over our nuisance ordinance, Article two, um, how we do things, um, what are some of the, uh, nuisance uh, that we have here in the city, and how we're going to, uh, deal with those. So we just felt like it was time to update these and, um, give us a better handle on how to take care of those nuisance. Uh, one of the things that, um, we really wanna start working on is the abatement of some of the nuisance that we have here in the city, and how to go about that, how to go about it legally and, and be able to take care of those, uh, issues. In this ordinance, I believe it explains it very well, um, shows us, uh, a roadmap on how to do that, the timeline on how to do that, what a nuisance is, um, also to be able to get rid of those nuisance by having either the city, meaning DPW, or a third party go in and clean up those nuisance or remove those nuisance, and, uh, put the cost back onto the property owner, and, uh, if they choose not to pay those costs, then to go on their taxes. So those are, uh, the biggest changes to, um, this ordinance. One of the other, um, important parts about this ordinance that you, the commissioners, uh, probably need to know is that, uh, just like some of the other ones, we do have, um, an appeal process. And in the ordinance, it states that the board of commissioners will be part of that appeal process if somebody says that what they have is not a nuisance, and they, um, have to go to somebody to appeal that, uh, the board would be that if you so choose or have someone else do it. We have that in other ordinances too. I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that. That did not change, but just making sure that you, as a board, did not wanna change that.
No, I didn't, I didn't see my...
Sure. So they would work through the city clerk to, uh, make a, get put on the agenda and come to you. So that's just a legal process that we have to have with board of appeals. Other things, we just kinda changed a little bit of verbiage in here, um, to kinda help it out a little bit. Uh, if you look at, we added some new definitions, um, where it goes to junk vehicles, uh, litter, um, and, and stuff like that. And instead of me just kinda raddling on, I guess I would be happy to answer any questions, uh, reference this.
When are we gonna start?
When are we gonna start? Well, as soon as this gets approved and, uh, we have a second reading and then the final approval.
About fifteen days.
About fifteen days after that.
Do we waive her complaints, or are we actively sweeping the city every day, every week, once a month?
I, I would, I, I plan on discussing code enforcement with you. Um, I, I just, any questions on this? Because that's kind of two separate, two separate things on the ordinance.
Okay.
So any other questions?
I don't have any questions on that, no. Does anybody else have any question?
Uh, well, I'm, go ahead. When, when you talked about this ordinance, uh, you know, there was different, there were different criteria, like you said, garbage, trash cars, buildings that are stuffed full of junk. Sure. Those kind of things, so, yeah. So those all follow under the nuisance ordinances that we're here. Right, yeah. That we would be able to, uh, once we start the process, it's basically like a legal process, um, that we were to get these things taken care of, uh, finish the process, um, either cite them, write them, give them a ticket, or, like I said, the DPW or a third, uh, party can go onto their property, remove that, and that charge will be added to the property owner. At the end of the, the process, the issue is gonna be done, and that's what we want to happen, is these issues to be handled. And we just don't get tied up in court and, and write them a ticket and then nothing ever gets done. This ordinance does not fix everything. It, there's multiple ordinances that cover different issues that's going on in the city. But I think this helps a lot of your junk vehicles, your, uh, trash and just debris around houses and stuff like that. So as we start the process of, of doing a better job in code enforcement, this ordinance right here that you guys hopefully will approve is gonna help our code enforcement do a better job and have the end result of solving the problem.
But see, that policy, I believe, it said there, they had to start remedying the issue within two days, and they had to finish within ten days. Did you, is that new, or...
There's a number of two to ten days that they can give them to solve the issue, to fix the problem that they have.
Is that new, or was that existed?
Nope, that's, that's, uh, that's the way it's always been, two to ten, yeah.
How much are we gonna publicize the fact that we're actually gonna start enforcing ordinances before we go out there?
Well, I don't know if we're gonna publicize it other than just doing it. The, the biggest thing that I found in, in this city or any other place that I've worked, is once you start enforcing rules and you start, uh, taking care of business, it seems to spread among the neighborhoods, the neighbors, and, and the community that, uh, this is what they're gonna do.
I think this, I mean, as you know, this is a very hot topic.
It, it is.
All five of us are getting hammered on a regular basis about why we're not enforcing code violations.
So let's, let's talk about, since no more questions on this?
I mean, I, maybe the guys go either hand, but I don't have any questions about that policy.
I want you to answer the question. Sure, you, you bet. So as, as, if, if the, the citizens don't know, we, we hired a new code enforcement officer. He started just this month. I, I know the mayor asked a question about do we just go out and, and find, um, issues?
Do we wait for people to, to call?
Or do we do complaints? So, um, we, we've worked really hard on trying to figure out what we were doing right, what we weren't doing right. So I've listened to the citizens, I've listened to their suggestions, their complaints and their ideas. I've listened to the commission, uh, city manager lunch. And as we make this new code enforcement division, I'm not just putting a new guy, I'm not just saying, here's a new guy and we're gonna start. There's things that we did not do right, there's things that we've gotta do better, there's procedures that we have to do, there's new ordinances that we have to write. To the point of how we monitor these cases, uh, how we file these cases. We have a procedure now where myself, the chief, can go in and see where we're at in this process, that nothing's being dropped. So the program itself is starting off on, on better legs than it was before. To answer your questions, a lot of time it was complaint-driven, because we had part-time code enforcement. Their thought process was that they would get the complaint, they would go work it, and then that was, that's how it was done. That's, that's not how it seems to do the best for our community anymore. Yes, we encourage complaints. If you see something that's going on in your neighborhood... Yes, we encourage complaints. If you see something that's going on in your neighborhood, by all means, call us. Don't wait for us to go find it, but call us and work with us, because we can't do it alone. We need all the citizens, we need everybody's eyes in their neighborhood to see what's going on. But yes, we do drive around, because I have been around with the new code enforcement officer twice on what's going on, keeping me updated on what's happening, where we at with these things, here's a new, uh, residence that's got an issue and stuff like that. Because it's ongoing, it's, it's constant. We can go through and, and say we take care of all the yards, and then next week there's another yard or there's another house with the junk piled up behind there. So our new code enforcement officer has been given, um, some new ordinances, some means of how to do things. I wish he would have been here tonight, but unfortunately he could not be, he's on his honeymoon. So he kind of felt that that was more important than being here, so I will have him at the next meeting, so you guys can, um, meet him. So we, we want to set the city, we want to set this new code enforcement officer up to succeed. And, and yes, Mayor, I know, uh, as, as much as you guys, uh, get to complaints, I get to complaints also. And as this first year, twenty twenty-three, um, with Heather and then with, with, um, city manager Lynch, when he first came in the office, we sat down and we said, hey, this, this is something we got to change, this is something we got to do better. And we're moving forward in that process. So we are gonna do better, we're doing different things, uh, we are gonna patrol around, but again, we need those citizens calling us and letting us know, hey, this is what's going on. So our end goal is to fix things, our end goal is to have a better quality of life, having better-looking neighborhoods. And, and sometimes you don't realize something's broken until you're able to meet with a group of people. And we've been meeting with a group of people for probably a little more than a year now. Citizens that, uh, kind of came together and talked to us about code enforcement, and we would meet with them, and they would share things that was going on in their neighborhood. And one of the biggest things that led me to this is because we couldn't get it fixed. Just because we've got an ordinance or we've got something, the, the legal system sometimes doesn't work for everything. So just as much as we try to fix things, we realize what doesn't work. So that's why, again, we kind of pushed toward this ordinances, abatement, to help take care of some of these problems that we couldn't take care of before. So it's, it's just like in law enforcement, code enforcement's the same thing, you know, if you quit learning, you're, that's as good as you get. But you gotta keep talking with people, you gotta keep, keep learning, and you gotta keep trying things. So that's kind of where we're at now, um, and, uh, we're, we're gonna continue to try to do the best we can with this new code enforcement officer, um, understanding the concerns of the citizens and, and how they feel and what they've not seen happen. We want to make sure that they're gonna start seeing some wins, as I call them out there. Mayor, that was a long answer. Did I answer your question?
Well, I mean, I was just gonna say, on the opposite end of coming down on people, I think the other thing that we can all do as a community is, um, I was telling Tim the other day, I've, I've been walking a lot, and when you're out there, five in the morning, you can see a lot of things. And there are people who are doing good things too. There are people who have, have fixed up a lot of houses in our community, and on two occasions, I've stopped and complimented them and said, wow, you know, your house looks great, all you did was apply some paint, plant some flowers, you mowed great. I mean, I think that goes a long way, and I think that's something that all of us can do, so I would encourage you to do that. If you see your neighbors putting in the effort, add one back.
Exactly, that's, that's it. And, and you're right, you know, we, we've got a, a, a large percentage of our community that takes a lot of pride in their property and their residents and works really hard to keep them up. Uh, we have a small portion, a percentage in our, the city that doesn't, and those are the ones we're going to work with. And, and also on the other, other aspect of this is, is, you know, I, I hear, um, that we don't write tickets. We don't do enforcement. Well, there's a lot of things that's going on in the background about helping people out, trying to get them, because some people can't afford it. Some people have got an issue with their house and they just can't afford it. Uh, there's programs that we were looking into to help give them some kind of support. It's not all about coming down with a hammer, there are certain people that need a hammer, I get that. But there's also some people that need help, they need a leg up. So if you know of any, um, grants or anything out there, uh, I'm looking at you guys and, and anybody that hears of anything that could help our citizens who are low income or, uh, just are struggling, that we can give them a leg up to get the siding put on their house or get a window replaced or something like that, we would be happy to work with them on that too. So again, as a community, we can fix a lot of these issues. So, uh, we're looking at it on all different eyes and gonna try to do the best we can to fix these problems. That's the biggest thing, is to solve these issues, to fix these problems, and, and win, and finish, and that's where we failed before. So, with that.
Have you got a form for your officers to fill out or a DPW to fill out with a complaint that they can hand in? So that they can give you an address so that code enforcement can check it out?
Sure, most of the time it's an email or a phone call to.
But I mean, are you, are you asking, are you asking, I mean, I want to see all the police officers do this, because there's a, you know, let's just cut to the chase here. There's been no code enforcement in the city, grass and snow, let's just be honest about it. The biggest complaint in this city has always been code enforcement, you know, and now, now we're turning over a new leaf. But I asked you when we were gonna start, this resolution doesn't give you the power to start. You have already got codes on the books to do code enforcement, and there's been no code enforcement. There's been no code enforcement, unless somebody actually complains, and I talk to you regularly.
You do?
You know, you, I do. But there's been no code enforcement by the law enforcement agency, and you guys are not social workers, I'm sorry, Tim, you're not social workers.
Dan, I'm, I'm gonna disagree with you.
Well, you can.
I, I see what my officers are doing, I, I see code enforcement, I see tickets written.
But we get a copy of the tickets, we get a copy of the tickets.
You get a copy? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, we do, we get, we get a copy of the tickets, not the tickets, but how many are written.
Sure.
You know? Because, you know, of everybody's privacy, but no, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna politely disagree with you on that. And the thing about it is, is I really want to see enforcement, there's been no, sidewalks has been a major complaint for fifty years.
Okay.
And there's been nothing done for fifty years, so, I mean, this is.
That's another question though, are, is, are the sidewalks part of the, a part of that?
No, the sidewalk falls under the responsibility of the city manager. If you look here, I've been asked about sidewalks, and it says, all sidewalks within the city shall be kept in good repair by the owner of the life adjoining such sidewalk. Whenever any sidewalk within the city shall be required repaired because of unsafe, uh, demeanor, the city manager shall give the owner a written notice. So, as we move forward, this problem needs to be changed too, this man here, whoever, he's got too much time to.
What do we need to change it for? I mean, why do we need to, why do we need to go through the process of changing it?
So, the reason I look at ordinances and the reason that I spend time is to make them better, is to make this where we can, as a city, have the cert, the right people doing the right job. This is not something for the city manager to go and do, this is something that should fall under code enforcement, and we will probably rewrite this so it does. So if we do have an issue, code enforcement can go out and, and do what they need to do. Now, I know the city manager needs to play a part in that, because it's gonna take city funds to fix that. And, um, in our budget, thanks to city manager Lynch, he has started a sidewalk fund, just like he started a demolition fund. And I, and I appreciate that, and like I said, Tim and myself have had numerous conversations on how to do code enforcement better, how we can help the citizens solve these problems.
It's not up to this city to fix sidewalks, it's up to the taxpayer to fix sidewalks, irregardless of what it says. It's part of, it's, it's in there.
No, but we can look at it, how we can.
What he's allocating for is help, and it still gets back to the question, Tim, I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
It's on the books, you know, there's been no enforcement, irregardless. I know Dick passed away and I like the old man, you know, but there's been no enforcement for thirty years. I remember coming down here twenty years ago, I complained about code enforcement. And every, every other month, we heard it down here, and there's been zero code enforcement.
Well, I disagree with you, so I'm, I'm sorry that, about that, Dan.
I can take you for a walk around the city and show you sidewalks that ain't been touched. I can show you stuff that ain't been touched for fifteen years, and I'm around the city as much as any of your officers, I know I am. So, I mean, we'll agree to disagree on that, Tim, but, um, I don't want to wait to pass ordinances to co, you know, as an excuse to not enforce ordinances.
Well, let's get this one passed.
I, I don't think I've.
As I say, we just gotta move on this one, and then, then we can go ahead.
You have to do a second reading.
Yes, yeah.
But I mean.
Do you mind if I make a motion?
I don't want the lawyers contacted for any of these changes.
So would you like to make a motion to approve the first reading?
This is money, I would move to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three point oh six slash four thirty-six as presented.
House support.
Thank you. That is a.
Yes.
We did.
Yes.
We are.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Serious.
And Tim, just like many other things in this city, uh, things are left undone, and it takes time to fix things that were not done, so, thank you for.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, because that's pretty specific.
Okay, we are moving on to item twelve, communications. I think you've already given us all communications.
Yeah, I was just saying.
So let's go to, uh, public comment on non-agenda items. Are there any, uh, public comments on non-agenda items, and so, just like, for your sake, your name for minutes, sir.
Derek Leonard, uh, chairman of the McCoyst Creek Trail. We have a great relationship, I think you know, with the, uh, DPW. Mike and his crew do an absolute great job, but there are times that we go outside because it, it works for us economically. So I want to inform you, and I should have informed Harvey, I guess, tomorrow there will be, uh, Baron County prisoners in town doing, uh, maintenance on the trail, they cut back all the Schumac and whatever. Uh, we get up to six prisoners and, uh, um, a guard and a vehicle. And they come into town and we give them a project to work, and it costs us all a hundred eighty dollars a day. And I don't think you could provide six guys for a hundred eighty dollars a day. Uh, that comes out of, we have a fund in the McCoyst Creek Trail for maintenance, it comes out of there, again, none of your money. I just wanted to make it, everybody know that tomorrow, and next Tuesday and Wednesday, there will be prisoners in town doing maintenance work on the trail.
Orange jumpsuit day.
Thank you.
They like doing that stuff too.
They love it.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Uh, my name is Britta Hughes, I live in three oh six Richard Street, and I am on the Northside Neighborhood Advocate Group. And there was a comment that was made earlier, and I just want to get clarification of that comment. Mr. Fianski said that the equipment from Catherine Park would go to Victory Park, which is in the Northside Neighborhood. Were you joking, or what's, or are you serious?
It was brought up, I mean, I'm not supposed to talk to you, but yeah, it's not, it's not, it's very temporary, ma'am. We're just trying to save the best equipment that's.
We don't want hand-me-downs. Our children deserve new equipment. Our neighborhood deserves new equipment, don't give us hand-me-downs. We are taxpayers just like everybody else. We will not take hand-me-downs. Our neighborhood has been there a long time. We are an intricate part of Buchanan. We deserve new equipment for our children. We deserve new equipment for our neighborhood, so don't give us hand-me-downs. We are not hand-me-down roses, we deserve new equipment. So, that, that doesn't fly, I was insulted when I heard that, very insulted, when I heard that you wanted to give us hand-me-downs.
Ma'am, it wasn't my decision.
I'm not saying it was your decision, but it was said, it was verbalized, and it was insulting. So I just wanted to make that note, don't give us hand-me-downs, we don't want hand-me-downs, we deserve new equipment.
Thank you. Any, anyone else wish to make a public comment? Okay, seeing that, let's move on to city manager comments.
Okay, uh, as well, I may information aware of something here, uh, there's a Buchanan Township potential development out of the Clear Lake area. The Life Action Camp is considering expansion in connection to the Buchanan wastewater system. However, with other developments out in that area, I think it would behoove us to explore an overall approach to that area of bringing in new customers to the city through the township. Uh, there's a meeting this week, uh, with a few people at Township Hall, Life Action Camp, their engineer and myself. Again, very preliminary, I just wanted to make you aware of it, and if we're gonna do something to bring in additional, uh, folks from out that way, we ought to look at the whole thing and not piecemeal it. I'll keep you updated on that. Thrill on the Hill is, is right around the corner, we've been doing some ongoing planning with an internal committee here at, in City Hall. Brittany has been doing a wonderful job of getting sponsors, Ashley and Emma have been diligent working on, on logistics and volunteers, they've got over forty to date. Courtney has been keeping us straight and narrow on the financial front, and Mike's doing all his specialties out there that, I don't even know what it is, but I know he knows what he's doing on that. Thank you, Mike. And, uh, so there's Thrill on the Hill, we're, and we're watching costs, uh, trying to determine what we really spend on one of these events. It looks like it's gonna be a great event this year. Uh, new city manager Ben will be, will visit us for a bit on Thursday morning to meet some of our administrative staff, visit a couple of facilities, and I think he's really wants to just prep for day one when he comes in, so it's not such a shock. He at least knows a few friendly faces when he walks in here, but he'll be in here for a few hours Thursday morning, and, uh, just getting ready to come start his job. And I've been to the library, it's a wonderful library, I've been there multiple times, and thank you for what you do there. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Wish for you. Wish for you, Ian.
Who, me? I got quite a bit I can say tonight. Can I read a text? Dan, you don't deserve to represent Buchanan, tonight was an all-time low even for you. You are truly an ass for saying you don't give a shit about local businesses. A few of those local businesses voted for you. You are such an embarrassment to this community, a selfish human being, do us all a favor and step down. I responded to that with LOL, um, that's just some of what we put up with. And actually, I have a fair amount of respect for this person, but, um, I respect anybody in their comments. I do want to address the thing as far as the playground equipment, it's not really hand-me-downs. If it doesn't get used somewhere, it's just gonna get destroyed. So actually, I was quite excited about moving it, because Catherine Park was decided to be used first, and I'm not even on that committee. And you can shake your head, get on guard, the North Park Committee is a committee that's not even recognized by the city of Buchanan. But the thing about it is, is if you take the equipment, because, um, we are in the works trying to find brand-new equipment.
Whether you recognize us or not.
Man, you're outboard, you're outboard.
Whether you recognize us or not, we are part of the city of Buchanan, and we should be treated as such.
You are treated with the utmost, utmost of respect, and the thing about it is, if you don't want that playground equipment, you're one person. I know the ballpark will gladly take it. The thing about it is, is you heard how much it's gonna cost us, and we should be quite willing to use any equipment anywhere that we can, and anybody that gets it should be happy to get it. Now, that's just one instance of what goes on down here. One person gets up and feels they're being treated worse than anybody else, and we're sitting down here scratching our butts, trying to spit nipples. I did want to say, I go to the library fairly often, I buy books, hope you sold a lot of books in the running sale. Tim, if I don't say it, I'm gonna say it several times, thank you. You have accomplished more in ninety days than has been done down here for forty years, no matter what anybody says. Thank you very much. Thank you, you guys.
Okay. Well, I want to start out, for most everybody that's in here, uh, I want to thank Mike Baker and his DPW crew for the, the great Memorial Day that they helped furnish. I mean, I don't know if a lot of you people get out late at night, but he had, he had crews down there working, uh, cleaning the streets, striping the uh s- uh s- striping the streets, painting, hanging up veterans banners. He was just doing it all out there with his crew. Mike appreciated it very much, same way with the cemetery, Nick Bailey did an outstanding job out there. I know that he had to uh he had some complications that were brought to our attention and when I say our attention, the American Legion because of the veteran circle. Nick handled them professionally because we even had involved the Buchanan Police Department in on a couple of the things. Got everything straightened out on Memorial Day, so I just want to go on record thanking Nick and uh that crew also along with Mike. Tim Gase and Chief Harvey, you know, you guys once again did an outstanding job with your people and with the uh people that you are your volunteers, so thank you for that. Meg, great job on the library, we really appreciate it. Once again, thank you to the staff for everything they do. Tim has been doing an outstanding job, we all know that. Ninety days here and and like I said, we've got a lot of stuff done. Want to thank, always thank this commission because there is a lot of stuff that we hear outside, you know, we can't, we don't go through a lot of offense that we aren't asked questions or chastised for what we do or just whatever, but you know, that's, I guess that's part of the job, take it as it comes. I did want to bring up one thing because uh I know Mike has addressed this, but it was brought to my attention once again, down at the commons area, right there where the creek is, where the sidewalk is collapsing. Uh I think the city is probably gonna have to look at that because I, my opinion, and I'm not an engineer, never claimed to be, I I've never rode in the front of a train. But uh I it appears that that pipe is collapsing and we're gonna have to do something there. Like I said, it was brought to my attention that a lady almost fell there and so uh.
So I did see it today, I hadn't even seen it until it's the whole area, that whole one drive.
It's the whole thing and and to be able to fix it, we're gonna have to tear it up.
Yeah, so I was gonna put a guy actually in the creek tomorrow to walk and see where it's losing, if it's even coming inside.
Yeah.
At that point, you, we just never know, I, as big of an area as that is, I don't know that it's that, I think the ground's just soft and it's thick.
It's kind of saturated and and under being undermined it.
Yep.
Yeah, oh, I know, I uh I heard, I heard about that.
I saw it today, I was like, oh, right.
Like I said, and but thank you for everything that you and the city, uh DPW did for the Memorial Day. When you're, when you look at Memorial Day on the level that I get to look at it, you know, with all the people walking down the street, it it would, it's pretty impressive and you know, people appreciate that with all of the plants and the banners and the paint, fresh paint and everything they do. So thank you very much and that's all I have.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm, I have quite a few comments I want to cover tonight. The first thing I want to do though is ask City Manager Lynch to make a note. I I think all of us are are well aware of the amount of attorney fees we've been paying. And so we would ask you to please draft a policy about who can contact city attorney. We believe it should be yourself or myself in case I want to call them about you. But if, you know, e- even if the mayor has something that he wants the attorney, then it should go through you, you should be the mouthpiece of the city attorney. But five of us should not be calling the city attorney, that's what runs up our bills, so if you could throw something together.
Sure.
That would be much appreciated, thank you. Number two, I wanted to congratulate and thank everyone involved through the collaboration of Moxon and Alwa, uh excuse me, Moxon and Alwa Elementary Schools and the Rody Rody Arts Center. This year's Empty Bowls fundraiser raised six thousand dollars for the Redbud Area Ministry School Campaign. Number three, on Saturday, June third, the Van Dyke Review kicked off the nicest place in America tour and gifted the city a autographed guitar to play somewhere here at City Hall, hanging over by the key or something. Let me get a good shot of that, hold it up. I mean, it was a really good concert, they do a great job of promoting Buchanan and I thank them. But you know, because we donated to the tour, that's why they gave you that's the guitar. Uh and it was a great show, it was a great way to kick off the summer concert series. Which takes me to my next note, and I have to, I don't know how to say this, I'm gonna say it as nicely as I can. As much as we want everyone to go with their families and enjoy the common, something had, so the very first night, there was a concert down there, I'll just, I'll just tell you the story. I was down there and I was kind, I tried to stay out of the way, but I was walking around the edges and I was over by the creek and three small children, two of them still in diapers, went running towards the creek and there were no parents with them. And so I was watching the kids and I was looking for parents, I was watching the kids and I was looking for their parents and it was just the three kids and if you're gonna go to the common with your children, please keep an eye on them. The creek is fun, but if you go under the bridge, it can be very dangerous. And we don't want to ruin the summer with anything tragic happening, so that was my public service announcement for watching your children in the common. Which leads into the next one, the kids are out of school, so please drive carefully and alertly. The very first day, school got out, I came around a corner and there was a young gentleman on a skateboard who needs more practice and he was in the middle of the road. So drive alertly, the kids are all over the place and darting in and out of the street. My last comment is, I mentioned earlier, I've been walking a lot and the two main places that I've walked are on the trail and in the cemetery. And if you don't take advantage of the trail, number one, you're crazy because it is a beautiful, it is a gem. But if you've been out behind the dog park, you will realize how much work is involved with keeping it in a in great condition. There's a ton of mowing and weeding, so I want to commend the DPW on on their work there. And the same goes for the cemetery, the cemetery is, I I walk there about quarter to five in the morning and it is beautiful, it's quiet. So I I want to commend the cemetery crew for the work they do there too. What makes me angry, um I was walking up behind the dog park on the trail and noticed that there's some graffiti on the retaining wall up there. And I was, I was notified today that there's been some graffiti on the tin shop and the shed behind the tin shop that just happened. And it really makes me angry and I don't want to throw empty threats out, but if those are your kids, they need to be held accountable and not just fined or slapped on the wrist, but they need to be down there scrubbing that crap off to find out how how much hard work is involved. So I'll do everything in my power to make sure that they are held accountable. And with that, Mike had asked if you, if you have any spare paint that's the color of the common in the tin shop, I don't know if you do or if we can match.
Yeah, we'll probably have to match.
It's not a huge area, I mean, it would honestly take fifteen minutes to just get a roller and go over the graffiti if we could. But it looks terrible and we're better than that. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn, I want to thank you everybody for coming, I think it was a very productive meeting today and it's nice to see everybody here, so.
I'll make said motion.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. All favor, hi. Thank you.